Late in the civil rights movement, Byron Ruston in 1965 wrote an essay called "Protest or Politics", because he realized at the time that protests could only get to civil rights movement so far, and we know that protests can only get to the invisible movement and pro-democracy movement and recovering our country from authoritarian approach. Needs more than protests. Protests are a good form of politics, they're fun, they energize you, you know you're not colluding, but they're not the whole game. So tonight, we're going to talk about another step in politics, which is voting and getting to know our candidates and beginning to build relationships with them, so that they are accountable to who we are, who they are, and what we need for our issues. So the questions... So what we did... Let me move on to the next slide, sorry. About to fall off here. The process we used to get here was that on July 18th, we invited all 10 candidates who were running for either at-large or district seat in Duluth City Council to come to this meeting. Eight people agreed to participate. Derek Edmond and Chris Adet refused to participate, declined many, many offers, declined plenty of invitations, decided not to come. Tara Swenson said she would come, but is not here tonight. And Pierre Tournier is ill tonight and doesn't want to give it to us, so we can give him a pass on that. But just so you know, never in my organizing life I've had harder time getting some candidates to come to something where they could be voters. So tonight, we're very grateful for the candidates and the representatives who could come. We know some people had conflicts of schedule, so we invited everybody to sit in a video or send a substitute representative. Some people have done that. So what's going to happen is all of the candidates have answered three questions ahead of time, and those were sent to you in the information in this meeting. They're also available in hard copy outside. And what we're going to invite each candidate to do is, starting with the at-large candidates, think about five minutes, we have a friendly timer here, Jenny Peterson is a friendly timer. Five minutes, either answering those questions again, deepening your response to those questions, adding to those questions, or simply telling us why you're the best person for the job that you're running for. So it's a fairly free forum, five minutes, do your best, let us know who you are, what you stand for, and why we should elect you to the city council. So I'd like to invite the at-large candidates to come forward, please. And bring your table signs, because we're doing night two. So we know it takes courage to run for office, and so we thank you for doing that. So Asher, with the name of hey, would you like to start? Yeah, so what do you think, the questions we'd asked in advance, which you can all reflect on, is what do you think the role of the city city council should be with respect to basic human and civil rights in terms of federal political environment? As a candidate, what do you think is the most important issue facing our city? And why should we be electing the lead? And anything else you'd like to say? And again, you know, five minutes, let us have it. Ready? Thanks for coming.
It's just on. Oh, there we go.
We're all learning, right?
Much better. The role of the city council. I don't believe there's many people on the city council that are really effectively taking their role seriously, which is to listen to people. Time and time again, people have come and they've voiced their opinion, and they said, "This is what we want, this is what we want, this is what we want", and they'll vote the absolute opposite way. And they'll come up with excuses or some other reason, especially not just with the Palestine thing downtown, but with the development in Woodland, where the residents didn't want it, it's going to destroy the watershed, it's going to make their properties in peril, it's going to pollute the lake. Horrible things are going to happen. They protested it, they protested it, they protested it, and the city council said, "No, we're going to do it anyway", and it's going to solve the housing crisis, because all of you people are going to downsize one day, and you're going to move into one of these expensive properties, and then that'll open your place up for somebody else to buy. And that's trickle-down real estate, it doesn't work. Trickle-down economics doesn't work, trickle-down real estate doesn't work, that's not the way to do it. You can't build a city by catering to business, it doesn't work. It never has worked. And I have no illusions about myself, I realize that I'm extremely a lawn shot here. I am a normal, ordinary person. I own a business in Lakeside. I live in Lincoln Park in a condemned house that I bought and restored. I am not anybody special, I am not a college graduate. I don't take donations, I don't seek endorsements, but I just want everybody to know, as a person, as a resident, you have a right, you have a right to want better. You can have better, you can demand better. You can ask for better, you can shout for better, you can scream for better, and you deserve better. And you just have to make them listen. And the only reason I'm running is just to make somebody listen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Johnson, I'm running for city council at large, and I'm grateful for you all being here tonight. I want to start with a few things just about who I am. So I was born and raised in Duluth. I was raised by a single mom, I'm an only child. I lived on the streets of Duluth in my adolescence, and we struggled financially. And through that process, I learned how to live in times of uncertainty. And we are in times of uncertainty. And so what I bring is a unique perspective to city council. I spent a lot, 17 years in New Mexico, where I kind of launched my community organizing dedication in life, particularly with indigenous communities, communities of color. Worked around public policy, particularly, you know, the uranium legacy is not done in New Mexico. And really kind of launched a part of our freedom to marry on a state and national level. And so I've done public policy from a community organizing perspective. And I truly believe in working with and alongside community members and helping kind of blend my voice when I'm in positions to our communities, who are not necessarily always at the table. And part of my candidacy is thinking around how do I bring in people around the table when we're having conversations? That's a critical part for me. And so as a city councillor, I believe we have a lot of possibilities. We have a lot of possibilities in our city. We can have, as an at-large candidate, you have to have a comprehensive view, you have to have a big vision, right? And so how do all the pieces in regards to what's happening at Lester Park connect to what's happening in Spirit Valley and the West District kind of business? And kind of thinking around revitalization of those districts? All the way up to Gary New Duluth. And so I am a large visionary thinker, and I'm a doer. So those go well together, just let me say that. You have to be able to know how to work in partnership, have conversations, have difficult conversations. And when we talk around what's your role in respect to basic human and civil rights, it's not just this political environment, it's every day. Every single day, people deserve to feel like they matter, that their lives are important, that they belong. And so that's what I want to bring to city council. And I'm a transparent, accountable person. I'm not afraid to have hard conversations. And I recognize when you're at the city council, you're going to make votes, you're going to be in conversation, you're going to be in dialogue, you're going to have a packed full room in the chamber, and you listen. And I not only listen with my ears, I listen with my heart. So what are people truly saying is really important for me. And there'll be times when I make decisions that not everybody's going to agree with. That's just the nature of being an elected official. But I can tell you one thing, I would do, make my decisions in the best interest of every one of us, to the best of my ability. And the other piece around, thinking around what's happening on a federal, like state and federal level, in our school boards, we have to be very creative around what budgets look like and kind of funding streams look like moving forward. And so we need to kind of think around how do we want to protect our workforce, protect our unions, protect our kind of healthcare professionals who are caring for us every day? How do we kind of think around community safety, protecting people within their homes? Potential violence will increase, we've lost too many lives recently to gun violence. We have to think around fair housing, what does that look like? What are the potential regulations that we need to kind of review? Kind of go back and kind of see, well, what can we do differently? And so those are kind of some of the priorities for me in thinking around moving forward. But it's really, my belief is in the power of the people, you all. You are the ones who brought me here today. It's my passion, it's my love, it's my joy, and every person in politics says it, but I'm saying it. And so there's a purpose, and I'm grateful to be here, and I'm grateful for you all here, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have this conversation with you.
Hey everyone, my name is Zach Motor. I appreciate you guys coming out tonight, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to get to know you a little better and for you guys to be able to get to know myself as well as the other candidates a little better. I feel like that's important. I'm going to read what I read, strictly so I don't go over time, I don't want to skip anything. So I believe that city council should respect every person's inalienable right to free speech. People should be given the floor, heard, and acknowledged. Our leadership should reflect that by keeping an open line of communication with the public, even on matters where there are disagreements, we should be leading with respect, open-mindedness, and a responsibility to work together in order to solve problems for the greater good of the people that we serve. That's what city councils should be doing. They should not just be working when it's in session, we should be working with organizations, groups, listening to people, and reflecting that in the decisions we make. The biggest issue facing Duluthians is housing. From having a well-maintained home, affordable rent, or finding a home of your own that won't break the bank, it all ties together. Simply put, Duluth has more people in need of housing than there are units, that's a problem. Especially if we're looking to grow the population. I'll advocate to create more affordable units by utilizing TIF with more oversight and vetting, investing in our city's housing trust fund, and working more with local contractors and developers. I'll also continue to work with citizen-led initiatives, such as the Duluth Tenants Union, on issues such as the right to repair in order to make conditions better for those who currently have a place to stay. By having more affordable, quality options, I believe that we can help people on all levels get their housing needs met. I'd like to add that I'm here to listen to you. As someone looking to be your next city councillor, it's important that I hear from as many people as I can to be able to do so to the best of my abilities. I'm willing to work with anyone and everyone regardless of their political beliefs. Let's gather the facts and get to the bottom of issues together. I want Duluth to be a better place for us all, where families, small businesses, and culture can thrive. If you'd like to learn more, you can visit motorfordduluth.com or come talk to me, I would love to have a conversation with you. I look forward to our next conversation, and it's a privilege to have the opportunity to serve you. I appreciate you, thank you.
So Therese Tominek, who is the president of the city council, cannot be here tonight because she is chairing the agenda meeting for the council, she's doing her job there, and interviewing people who are going to find for the, be the interim for Mike Mayor's replacement in District 2. So she has sent us a video, we're somewhat technologically challenged about that. We will send you, we'll post the link so you can get a better version of it, but take it away Stephanie, see if we can find Therese here.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to be with you virtually tonight while I am leading the agenda session at City Hall. First, I want to thank the organizers of this event and the other gatherings that have protested the devastating actions of our federal government. I have marked with many of them that have no king to protest. I have loudly spoken at Hands Off Gathering in front of City Hall to protest the cuts to Medicaid, which have impacted so many in our state, over 140,000 people will be losing their coverage. I've been to the EPA lab to protest against the cuts to that agency, which threatens the health of our Great Lake and the jobs of those that work there. I spoke at the Federal Building against the possible privatization of United States Postal Service with the loss of jobs, good service, and delivery, and another caring set of eyes to be on the vulnerable people in our city. But I'm here tonight to talk about what the city council has been doing to care for our citizens in Duluth in the areas of free speech, housing, water, community resources, and safety. I will also touch briefly on other levels of government who are involved in the areas of food supply and health insurance. First, free speech. At the beginning of every regularly scheduled city council meeting, the public can speak on any issue they want for three minutes. They can also reach councillors by email, phone, or in person, and I'll talk about how to reach me at the end of this video. Housing. The city council allocated $19 million of the $58 million American Rescue Plan dollars that the city received to affordable housing. We have recently built the Urbane, Gruick Creek, Harbor Highlands, Another Door, and we have a new project coming up, Brave View, which will provide affordable housing for seniors and up to 110 spots of childcare, something that is so needed in our community. In the area of water, we have been replacing red lines at as quick a pace as we can. We started with schools and childcare facilities, and then started in the Guerindin Duluth neighborhood and worked into Central Hillside. We also have been working on the EPA mandates to update our water treatment plant. Now, these mandates did not affect the quality of our water. We have the best water in the United States, as we all know. Community resources. Two or three years ago, I helped sponsor the Parks Referendum, which was a valid issue to increase the funding to our parks. Unfortunately, that did not pass by such a small margin, but we hope to keep our parks fully funded. I also voted to give some of the serious money to the library to increase their acquisitions budget. The libraries are incredibly important to all of our citizens, a welcoming area where we can offer enrichment to all of us, families, children, individuals. Safety. I sponsored a resolution to fund the crisis response team for 2025, and I helped allocate $1 million from the city and DETA for the remodel of the third floor of the Don Yano Center, while CHUM has their remodel and expands. I also have advocated for funding for police, fire, and life safety. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to be virtually with you. If you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I can be reached at ttominek@duluthmn.gov if it is a city-related issue, or voterese@gmail.com if it is a campaign-related issue. You can also visit my website at voterese.com for more information on my voting record, my priorities, and my views. Thank you so much again for this opportunity. I hope for your endorsement, and please vote in the primary on August 12th and the general election on November 4th.
Great job, Stephanie.
Good evening.
So thank you at-large candidates. Please go back to your tables, you can leave if you like, but we are going to be here for the next two district discussions, and then other votes, and then afterwards a social hour, which will be another time for you all to chat with potential constituents. So thank you very much. The candidates for District 2 come forward. So Diane Desautel has another event tonight, and so she has sent her able campaign manager, Melanie Rue, to represent her here tonight. Chris Adet was one of the people who declined to participate. And Pierre Tournier this evening, as I said, is ill and so can't be with us. So tonight, we have you.
If you know Diane, those are big shoes to fill, so thank you for having me. She's really sorry she couldn't be here, but I'll tell you a little bit about her answers to those questions. In a time of growing national polarization, the Duluth City Council must act both as a shield and champion for fundamental rights, ensuring every resident, regardless of race, gender, sexuality, religion, or income, receives equal protection under local law. I think the key responsibility for a city government perspective are to enforce anti-discrimination ordinances in housing, employment, public accommodations, and city contracting. We also need to use data-driven assessments and robust community engagement to identify disparities in policing, social services, and municipal programs. From there, we need to work with our partners to strengthen the Human Rights Commission and to work with neighborhood associations, schools, faith groups, nonprofits, to co-design policies that address systemic inequalities. Education is an important component in this process because it opens up our eyes to our own biases and provides tools to strengthen our awareness and work on ways to address how to interact with compassion first. As we work to improve our actions and reactions, we also must commit to transparent governance by publishing regular equity reports and work with the commissions and the councils to guide civil rights work. If necessary, the city council should consider the need to author local resolutions guaranteeing access to reproductive health, services, safe voting, and LGBTQ+ protections for state and federal safeguards our weekend. By grounding our decisions in science, listening deeply to constituents, and collaborating across sectors, the council can make Duluth a model of municipal leadership, defending rights at home, and even win state or federal bodies' culture. Working together, a community that takes care of our people, protects our environment, and supports our economy is what makes a city tick. And I would do this by focusing my energy on leading with housing, our open spaces, and infrastructure, because together these priorities will sustain us as a community. Housing provides the basic needs of the people who live and work here. This includes providing for our marginalized and those suffering from being unhoused and underserved. The environment is fundamental to who we are, and it is why people come to Duluth. We are very fortunate to have a quarter of our city as open space, which is the ideal amount of land needed to support our health and recreation needs as well as ecological surfaces they provide. Finally, to support our economy, we need to work harder to upgrade our aging infrastructure, transportation of all kinds, sewers, drinking water, in the urbanized area, because this sets us up to receive responsible growth for commercial and industrial development. The biggest issue we're going to be facing is financing as we're doing the work that we need. It will take more money upfront as we make up for the times that we have failed to maintain and rebuild such massive amount of infrastructure. In addition, we cannot depend on the federal funding that helps local governments meet their basic needs. We will need to look for creative financing solutions to expedite the work we need to do, knowing it will put us in a better place financially as we improve our tax base. I've dedicated my career to reclaiming and restoring lands and educating decision-makers on how communities can use lands sustainably so that we can live, work, and play in our urban settings. I am proud to have been the first natural resources management program manager in Duluth, and I worked to produce the first natural resources management program plan. I can also say that Diane has worked on educating people on how to be advocates for different organizations. She's worked with the housing issue through CHUM, and she leads little workshops, she's almost like Al Gore moving around with a slideshow, teaching people how to advocate their representatives. Thank you very much for your time. She has over 25 years living in this city, has been a civil engineer, land use planner, and educator. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And now, for District 4. Dave Plannock is here, and again Tara Swenson was going to be here, but for some reason has not yet. And so once again, we have one candidate who is standing for the, in the primary election, who can speak with us tonight. Thanks very much for coming, this seems to be the working mic.
I think with Tara, she's probably at the Duluth City Council, just for some context there. So thank you, Lee, and thank you for your service at CHUM, an organization I had the pleasure of working with a number of years ago, helping get the Rebar Festival going. 20 years strong. So you all have my written statement, so I'm not going to regurgitate that, I'm going to share some new thoughts. First, just thanking folks here, not just for standing up against, but standing up for. And your mission statement really speaks to that. I have a really dear friend on the north side of Lake Spear, a little town of Rossport, Ontario, retired social studies teacher. And he talks about this multiracial participatory democracy, that Canada's actually farther ahead than we are. And so we can learn from our neighbors in that regard. And I also want to thank this group for the humor. Signs like, "The only monarchs I want are butterflies", right? Or you might have seen the sign that I was holding, "The only king I want is Aragorn", right? So humor is helping us in this resistance. I want to share a little bit about my sort of philosophy and perspective. I've worked as a journalist, I work currently as a therapist. And what I've learned in those two roles is a lot of times I don't even know what the questions are. It's a matter of listening, really, really listening in a very present manner to have the questions present themselves. When I was a journalist, I really loved finding the voices that weren't being heard, that had ideas, that had truths, that had solutions that were being overlooked. And when I work with high-level sex offenders in my current job, folks who many people consider abject, but they're fellow human beings, and many of them want to move on to a better place in their lives. And you really got to dig deep and be very creative in finding how to make change happen together. And I think those are relevant to city councillors. One of my fellow candidates talked about this, you know, listening, really, really listening. We need to be at the forefront of this effort of participatory democracy. We need to be fostering a climate of true hospitality. In liberal governance, there's also sort of an approach to tolerance. We'll tolerate each other, right? But we really need to learn how to be truly hospitable to one another in all of our glorious difference. And, you know, to have a deep commitment to inclusion and equity. So this is what I see as a core democratic function of governance, and it really needs to exist at the local level. If we expect it to exist at the federal level, it's not existing at the local level, it's not going to be sustained at the federal level. And so I want to be an agent of this truly participatory democracy. And as I've been out in the community knocking doors, I mean, I've already knocked close to about 250, have signs up all over the place. What I'm observing is that people are feeling like our council has become increasingly concerned about, almost like being sometimes gatekeeping. And they're questioning the commitment to really engaging the citizenry, really listening to the citizenry. So, you know, citizens have shared with me, they felt disrespected, you know, reaching out for things, whether it's trying to find a out for things, whether it's trying to find a solution for a speed control situation, or, you know, they don't expect all the puddles to be filled tomorrow, but the ones that are really hazardous, they want to have a sense that there's a really good communication system in place and really good prioritization for this. And boy, five minutes really goes fast. So, you know, they felt disrespected and I've been at council meetings where people, you know, come with strongly held opinions and feelings and just don't feel like they're quite really welcome in a hospitable manner. I met with a group of trans LGBTQ folks who, we have a commission that currently lacks the ability to have a corner because they don't have enough members, three folks sent invitation, or they sent applications in April, they haven't heard back. People want to do this work, they want to be in it together, but we got to find some ways to get better communication established, better connectivity, stronger relationships, more, we're in it together rather than we're protecting our little corner of the world and we're in competition with one another. And so that's the type of perspective and sensitivity I want to bring to the work of a councillor. And all these issues are symptoms, housing, streets, they're symptoms of where we're disconnected and not working together well.
And as I said to the other people, you're free to go, you're free to stay, we're going to have a voting process, which I'll explain in a minute, and after that we'll have a social hour and you'll have time more time to talk to folks, and so thanks again. You can stay through this, this is a different kind of endorsement process as you might guess. So what we're going to have now is an opportunity for you all to vote on your agenda, does everyone have an agenda? Maybe my team out here could make sure we have everyone's agenda, it has a QR code for it. This is also somewhat of a technological stretch for us. Does anybody need a paper ballot because you didn't bring your phone? Okay, so hands up for blue, the people who need, I'm not discouraging for the paper ballots, I want you to use them. So the paper ballots are blue, could you maybe, someone on the team run through and give people who are raising their hands the ballots? If it's two-thirds or more of the votes of people present here, then we can say technically that Duluth is invisible and endorse that candidate. But endorsement for us does not mean a financial investment, we're not allowed to invest that way, but what we're doing is encouraging everybody to participate, to engage in the electoral process however you see fit. And if your candidate doesn't come out in the two-thirds, we can't stop you from coming. But the point of this is to engage in a process of reflection about who do we want to represent us, and then when you decide that, to go and work for that candidate, to be out on the streets or the doors, you know, however you wish to do it. And so the other part of endorsement, generally it's a small group of people who do it somewhat behind closed doors, but we decided to throw it wide open just to see what people thought, and we do not know, we do not know what is going to happen right now. So, again, if you can use the QR code, that's easier because we'll have to take some time to count the paper ballots. If not, we're happy to count the paper ballots. Are there any other questions about that?